All right, I will call to order the common council meeting on October 11th at 7:32. First up is the pledge of allegiance. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, roll call please, Tracy.
Alder Ellen?
Present.
Alder Radifrada?
Here.
Alder Gerhardt?
Here.
Alder Herbst?
Here.
Alder Malvanato?
Here.
Mayor Richardson?
Here.
Shannon Strassman is absent with excuse. Alder Udell?
Here.
Alder Wheeler?
Here.
You have a quorum, Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, first we got public appearances, then general items, new appointments. First is we're going to recognize a number of Fitchburg businesses that have been recognized as bicycle friendly. And if Steve and Mark want to come up, and we'll eventually add more people to that. I believe Mark is going to say a few things. Yeah, you do. They gotta be able to hear you at home.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome, and thank you for having us to your council meeting tonight. I'm Mark Hamilton. I am the chair of the Fitchburg Bicycle Committee, and I have lived in Fitchburg for 30 years. And three years ago, I was asked to serve as chairman of the committee, and one of the things we started working on was a journey to move to gold status for biking for the city of Fitchburg. It has been a big proponent of our mission in the city, both from the Chamber, from the city, from Bike Fitchburg. And we're doing a joint effort to move towards a gold standard, and part of it is having people like you who will commit to your business and your employees and your customers, a commitment to cycling and improving it around our city. So we have a plan to do this, and this was one of the pieces of the plan. We hope to submit something in early February, learn in the spring what we get achieved. But former Mayor Steve Arnold was a part of the other two awards we rewarded, silver in 215 and 219, and we're going to be going for gold in 2022, and this is part of it. There'll be more to come. If you know of others who may want to do this, may want to participate, please let us know. But I want to thank you and congratulate you and appreciate your commitment. And you've got a way to reach us if you have issues off the cuff, you want to talk about with biking for your employees, trails to go on, et cetera, et cetera. So I'll stop there and turn it over to which way? Steve?
Yep.
Thank you, Mark. Bike Fitchburg is the local bicycle advocacy organization for the city. We do everything we can to make biking safer, more accessible, and more fun, all kinds of biking. And so we're very involved in the Bicycle Friendly America program, bicycle-friendly communities for our city, bicycle-friendly businesses this evening. And so we're real pleased to be a part of this, and I will hand it over to the mayor.
Thank you, and it's very exciting to me to see how many businesses here in Fitchburg care about biking and are bicycle-friendly. I believe we have nine out of the 50 businesses roughly that have been recognized throughout the country. So a very large percent that have been recognized here in Fitchburg. And so we'd like to recognize those businesses. I know people are here. If you want to come up when I call your name, that'd be great. First, back in May, Fitchburg Family Pharmacy recognized as a bronze community, and I don't see Thad Schumacher. But he's, as you know, he's the bicycling pharmacist, so very bike-friendly. And then just recently, we had a few other businesses recognized. Wheel &amp; Sprockets Fitchburg Stores recognized as a platinum, and that's Adam Clark is the general manager. He's with us today. And we also have a Dysius, I say it wrong every time, I know. It was a silver business, and we have both Tim and Jason Adamani who are here tonight. Thank you. Fitchburg Chamber is also a silver business, and Mark Hamilton is here to represent them. Kale Engineering is also a silver business, and we have Scott Kramer here, who's the COO, and also Bill Beeseman, the project leader. Oh, wow. Very bike-friendly. You rode here in the rain. Fantastic. We also have the Boys and Girls Club Allied Family Center is a bronze recognition, and we have Terry Yankee, who's the associate vice president of development. And Delta Beer Lab, who is technically in the town of Madison for a few more weeks, is also recognized. But we will claim them because they are coming to us soon. But Pio is unable to make it tonight. Oasis Cafe is also a bronze business, and Kim and Paul are the owners there. They were unable to make it as well tonight. And Saris Psycho Group is a bronze community as well, and they were unable to make it. And also Shine Technologies is a bronze company, and Casey Lammers is here, who's a software engineering manager. So thank you all very much. We're gonna do some photos here with Scott. All right, next up is mayor appointments. We have an opening on the Plan Commission, and Janelle Rice is here to be nominated for that. Janelle, if you'd like to come up and just, you know, speak for a couple of minutes on why you're interested in this, that would be great.
Sound test?
You're good.
Thank you for letting me join you this evening. The mayor asked me about this position recently, and it feels like it's a good opportunity for me to give back to the community. You may be aware that I already said on another committee that takes a look at where we're heading strategically in the city. My day job is working with civil engineering firms, city of Madison and other places. And so when we start taking a look at this particular piece, it felt like that informs this and this informs that. And so it just felt like it was, it just made sense to me. Glad to answer any questions you might have about my background or anything else that comes to mind.
Any questions, Nadia?
Yeah, I have a question. So the Plan Commission is supposed to have one representative from each district.
Correct, and someone who represents the borough of Fitchburg.
Right, and so as I understand this, you live in District Two, correct?
I live in District Four.
Okay.
Actually, we have everything covered without Janelle on there. There's everything covered, and then there's kind of a extra, I don't know if you want to say wildcard or something.
Well, I know there is. I just was trying to figure out what was going on here, but that's, I understand.
Anything else? Dave and then Julia after that. Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, my question is about, ah.
Go ahead, Dave. Sorry.
Janelle, thank you for your willingness to serve. Could you give me, you know, what might be one or two of your priorities? Things that, you know, close to your heart or, you know, that you would like to?
I can't.
I know I'm putting you on the spot.
That's a great question. I can't say that I have a specific priority. I think it's to really kind of come in and listen to every, every, every project that's brought before us, understand what it is that they're trying to accomplish, make sure that it is compliant with the direction that we're headed as a city, listen to city staff, and try to make a good decision about each of those efforts that comes forward.
Thank you.
Julia, go ahead.
Who is the person representing District Three?
District Three is Zach Billings.
Is he still in District Three or is it four that part?
Yeah, he lives right online.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Because I, you know, yeah, I am looking at the composition. I would like to see representation of it as the district. Okay, thank you.
All right, I don't see anything else. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Signed by Dave, I think. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay?
Nay.
All right, that is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is the public hearing on the mayor's proposed budget. I've got a few people that have filled out forms. If anyone else needs to, let me know. Just a reminder that you have three minutes to speak. And first I have Paul Sutfin from Fitchburg coming up. Come on up, Paul.
Good evening. I'll make it short and sweet, I hope. I'm here because I want our Fitchburg services top of the line for your budget. I see over the years, there's too much mayors has their pet projects, and they sit there and put that in, and, well, first comes is our services. And I've seen, I drove truck for 38 years, and some of these municipalities put their fire and their police and their utilities on the back burner, and they try to make their places look like the Taj Mahal. And I've lived here for 63 years. Fitchburg has great police and fire. As we go down the stretch and we're inquiring more property in town of Madison, and we're getting more high-rise apartments, and I'm hoping, and I've talked to quite a few people, that I'm hoping that we spend a little bit more on the budget to keep excellent services for the fire and police and utilities, because, and I'm also hoping that we can, as we acquire more property and stuff, that we have adequate, I live out in the rural, so adequate snowplow boys. And that one year, we had a problem, and I went and talked to about four different people, and we didn't have the money to have the snowplows out. And the road in front of my place and on Sine became six inches of ice. So, I mean, that's a service that, you know, the guys got to keep our roads and stuff, but yet we have to have good police, good fire, and I don't want to see us nickel and diming our fire and police department, because up on my place, I mean, we're in the rural, and I was kind of baffled. And we have four officers on duty. And I says, what the heck can happen? Fitchburg is getting too big for just four, and so that's how come I want the budget to show that we can maintain excellence. And I just thank you for that.
Thank you very much. All right, I've got Colleen Chase next from Fitchburg.
Take this off if you can hear me. My name is Colleen Chase. I'm here tonight to urge you to support the additional staff positions requested by the Fitchburg Police Department as detailed in the mayor's proposed budget. You can't have it both ways. You cannot promote growth in the city without supporting commensurate growth in first responder services. The reality is everyone wants law enforcement to respond immediately if they ever need help. The department does serve and protect the entire city around the clock every day and night of the year. Thank you all. Amazingly, their work is accomplished while maintaining transparency and timely communication. Along with our gratitude, the Fitchburg Police Department should be allocated resources to provide the highest level of community impact. The department identified their personnel needs to serve our growing community. I want the city to approve the funds to meet these needs. Fitchburg citizens deserve this. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Patrick Chaney next.
Patrick Chaney, Fitchburg resident and taxpayer. For 25 years, I've been watching my unimproved land assessment, part of my property tax bill increase several times, and you should all check yours for this, too. Mine is at the per acre rate of 175,000 per acre, and I do not have city water or city sewer. But the Parks Department fee in lieu of land dedication is stuck at 65,000 per acre for the past at least two decades, probably three or more, which makes mine more than two and a half times that, maybe closer to triple that. Every acre that a developer is permitted to buy back, they sell at 400,000 per acre, a huge markup. The fee needs to be updated to the current fair market land value. It's supposed to work that the city collects the fee for a given acre and can choose some other acre somewhere, and the fee pays for it. But 65,000 is far too low, and that us taxpayers have to pay the rest of 335,000 to get that next acre. I asked the city assessor some questions earlier this year, and you can check with her and verify this for yourself. And what I heard was there is no land in Fitchburg that is worth less than 100,000 per acre. And I can cite several examples of land that has sold or is for sale for 400,000 per acre. Raise the fee to current land values or stop allowing the fee in place of land dedication. Insist on acres, and the acreage could start creating something like Moraine Edge Park. I did, I know that you all know how to reach me. If you disagree with this or see things differently, give me a call, we can discuss it. I did mark the slip for answering questions, and then I have one more. The amplified sound permit costs $60 and requires going to a PSHS meeting. So the small groups, family events, birthday parties and such, have found that they can just skip it, save the 60 bucks, don't go to the red tape meeting, and there's no repercussions. So I suggest a one-year test, just one year only, of reducing the fee, possibly $30, and let the rec. department staff sell the permit to them with a stern warning. Don't get caught without the permit if you're going to have amplified sound. And if anyone is interested in discussing that, give me a call, and I can discuss more details with you. Thanks. Any questions?
And that is all I have for people who want to speak on the public hearing. So I can close the public hearing if there's no one else, and we can move forward. All right, next up is consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Jay?
Second.
Sent by Randy. Anything, anyone wants to pull out separately? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? All right, consent agenda is approved. Ms. Raiders report. Ms. Dea.
I just wanted to report, we had a conversation about the Fitchrona levy limit adjustment, and there's a question about whether or not you needed to be in attendance at the annual meeting. So everybody is, of course, invited to the annual meeting and encouraged to attend. It is on the 20th, next Thursday at 7:00 PM, but council is not required to be there in order to pass that levy limit adjustment we were talking about. And you should get more details from Chad in the next day or so.
All right, any questions? Seeing none, we can go to community commission reports. Anything on Plan Commission you want to talk about, Randy?
No, not offhand, unless you have something to offer.
I do not. All right, we'll go to Public Works, Dave.
I'll move approval, Resolution R. 18822, acceptance of dog playground park improvement fencing bid, Outlaw 11 of Crescent Crossing.
Sent by Jade, Public Works approved?
Public Works approved.
The Parks Commission approved? Yes, and Finance, did they approve?
Finance approved.
All right, what's this about, Dave?
So we are, as you know, at the previous meeting, the developer is essentially doing the work to develop the the dog park and the pocket park, but we, you know, we have to approve the purchases, and the fencing was one of the items for the dog park. And your estimate was 62,000. The estimate came back, or the bid came back at 66,000. Everything's costing more. It was spec that was acceptable to Board of Public Works, and we approved.
All right, any questions or comments at all? Seeing none, we go ahead and go to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? That is approved. Anything else, Dave?
No.
All right, before we go to Park Commission, I would entertain a motion to amend the agenda to move Resolution R. 18922 to be next.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jay, sent by Gabriella. All in favor of moving Resolution R. 18922 to now, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? All right, that passes. So Finance, do you want to do a motion on that resolution, Randy?
Yes, motion to approve Resolution R. 18922, approval for the fire department tender radio upgrade.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sent by Jay. Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, and do you want Chief to speak to this?
Yes, since he's here.
Perfect.
So the radio upgrade reflects the same specification that we had for radios earlier in the year. The reason why we separated these out is because of the fact that the equipment came back a little bit more expensive than we initially thought. We did have the ability to separate this out and strategically place these radios in the tender upgrade. That way, we could still receive the radios and take advantage of something that was already budgeted. Had the radios not been re- replaced earlier this year, we would have at least replaced these radios with the tenders. So it's all working out with the same specification, the same vendors. We're purchasing from Motorola Solutions and installing through Baycom, and that's all consistent with what you've seen earlier in the year.
Any questions for Chief? Dave?
Chief, is this the same tenders that you repurposed, you know, they replaced the tank on the chassis? Is this the same tender?
The same ones that have been approved. They have not yet been refurbished because of the fact that it was scheduled. We're hoping to get the first one in here either November or December, and the second one in first quarter 2023.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, seeing nothing else, we can go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? That is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we can go back to Park Commission. Julia?
We met on October 6th. We discussed the resolution about the Veteran Memorial Park, even though we approved it before it went to parks, but we have a symbolic, you know, vote. Also, we approved a resolution about the dog playground fencing. We discussed that. Also, we discussed the Stony Prairie Park designation, because it was a confusion about, it was an area park or neighborhood park. So there are a couple of resolutions coming in the future, and the Park Commission recommend that we consider this park designation as an area park. So we have an update about the town of Madison, the Moraine Edge Park update. We want to discuss this with, the Park Committee wants to eventually put it in a committee of the whole meeting to discuss about what is the future of this project that we already have in the CIP, but we want to know what is next step. So something that maybe Randy, someone from the Park Committee will approach you to, if we can add this for next year.
Sure.
To discuss this. And then we have a discussion, an update about the teen center, and that's it.
All right, thank you. Library Board?
We are meeting next week.
All right, Commissioner N. Genell?
Nothing. We're meeting on Thursday.
All right, and I believe that possibly have met the funding goal for the patio?
That's what I've heard.
I believe, already. So, yeah, about a month.
That's outstanding. That's outstanding.
All right, RCC?
We met, we met last night, and we had a nice conversation about the recycling drop-off site, how we're going to handle the lack of compliance. Apparently, we have been issuing citations for illegal dumping, so when there's a significant incident that was reported to the city, we go back to the license plate reader, grab it, and then find the person. But there's no consistent way to take that license plate data and issue citations in a streamlined way. So we really can't issue citations on a regular basis, except on a case-by-case, like reportable basis. So Ben was talking about different solutions, about having a tag for out-of-city people. You could have, you know, increase the fines so that they're more significant when people do get them. You know, there's all sorts of different potential options. I think we're going to start with another analysis to see if we can really ascertain exactly how many people coming in or coming from out of state, doing some sample testing and just seeing if we can figure out the scope of the problem, so that we have better data going forward. Because we just don't, we really just don't know how many people are actually city of Fitchburg residents, and given the pandemic, shopping behaviors changed, people have more cardboard in their life, it's hard to say where the increase in cardboard is, but it's a significantly higher stream of cardboard than it was, you know, pre-pandemic, 2019 and earlier. So we had that initial discussion, help me bring back some solutions to the next meeting. Ben is also going to put a RFP out for the Stormwater Utility Vegetation Management for a list of cities to start, list of sites, Stormwater sites, so that we can start doing native plant vegetation seeding, which takes like a three to five years of like dedicated, you know, attention, so that the native plants can actually seed and get deeply rooted without being crowded out by invasive. So we're looking, have a whole list. We're going to put out an RFP and see which companies can take that on, and then yeah, I think that's all. Thanks.
All right, thank you. What about TTC?
No report.
All right, what about CETA?
Next meeting is Thursday, October 27th.
All right, Ag and Rural Affairs?
Next meeting is next Tuesday.
All right, and EMS, like Misty mentioned, an O meeting is coming up in about a week. And if you can make it, great. Not required to, we changed that last year when we kind of did some cleanup on the contract. We're not actually taking an action at that meeting. It's good information if you can make it, but budgets come to us and we approve it in our meetings, so there's no need to approve budgets there like they did 20, 30 years ago, whatever that was, so.
Yeah, we did that every year.
Yeah, and usually no one had a quorum, so.
Well, we always did. We always had a quorum. The town of Madison didn't always have a quorum, but we always did. Town of Roanoke, I'm sorry, yes.
And town of Madison definitely.
Town of Madison's on my mind these days.
All right, moving along, Bike Committee.
So there is going to be a bike repair event this Thursday from 2:00 to 6:00 PM. And it'll be at Allied Park, which is right across the border in Madison. We met, the Bike Committee met on the 4th. We talked about bike infrastructure wishlist items that the committee had. We discussed members of the committee leading a bike audit and sort of, you know, going out and asking questions to residents about bikeability to be able to help with the, you know, move towards applying for gold. We provided an update on the B-cycle implementation, so finishing up, thinking about Phase One, when that's going to happen. Installation is slated to happen in March of this year, just because of supply chain issues. We had a discussion about the needs in Southdale neighborhood around bike infrastructure, so that's probably something that we'll dive into more deeply at our next meeting. And then obviously, the bike-friendly businesses were awarded. That's the most major things that we discussed.
All right, thank you. Tree Advisory?
No report. We are meeting this October 13th.
All right, Landmarks Preservation, I'm sure has not met as well. It's been a long time since they've met. Housing Advisory?
No report.
Housing Neighborhoods?
Well, we're still sitting on our hands waiting for November 2nd.
All right, excellent. Anything else in Finance, Randy?
Nothing else to add.
All right, Personnel? Anything in Personnel?
Yeah, sorry. So I'll go ahead and give a summary of what happened at the last meeting even though some of you have heard me say it before, but we had a long presentation about the market poll that we've done recently to, you know, pull data from all of our different positions and figure out if we're paying at market rate. Part of the impetus was just all the staff turnover and trying to figure out what was the cause of that. One of the causes assumed to be the, the pay rate. And so we had a great presentation from Patrick Glenn from Carlson Detman, who is the consultant. And if you want to know a lot, how they did the analysis, it's actually a really, really good presentation. I didn't know anything about this type. And if you're interested, he, he goes through it quite well. But the, the general answer was that our pay actually was not that far below market rate, but we have to pay a premium in order to maintain staff in this particular city because we're competing with City of Madison, Dane County, State of Wisconsin, University of Wisconsin, just given where we're situated. If we pay what another city of our size and another part of the state pays, we will not be able to maintain staffs. And this has happened in the past, but we basically pay market rate plus ten percent. And that's what we're going to have to do in order to maintain the level of staff that we have. So all that being said, they, they did a full look at the pay scales, looked at what the raises would be to, to match that kind of new standard. And, and the final answer is that across the board, every staff member is going to get at least a three percent raise. Some of the staff mostly, and it's mostly the staff that are paid on the lower pay scales are getting up to a seventeen to twenty percent raise. And then every single L T E employee, you know, part-time employee is going to bring, be brought up to at least fifteen dollars per hour. And that was included in the mayor's proposed budget. Had a lot of discussion around it. I'm happy to talk you through it, and I know Chad or Sarah and probably Aaron can also give you a lot of information if you're curious. But if you have, if you have a lot of questions, I, I really recommend watching the presentation because Patrick did a really good job walking through everything. But I'm happy to take a quick question now if anyone has anything.
We, when we, we used to use comparables for figuring out our pay rates and we used to do that every three years. And I know we used Sun Prairie and I want to say West Bend maybe, and maybe, I think Mequon was in there every once in a while because they were cities around our size and similarly situated with other things that were people that we're competing with. What are we, what, what other municipalities are we using for comparables these days?
Actually, I think we use more than just municipalities because you're getting the public sector that we're trying to compete with, like Verbiker, you know, hired Sonya Lake for significantly more. So we're actually looking broader than just other municipalities at this point in time. It's not every three years. It's been a while since Carlson Detman has done it, but they look at broader than just that because we're, there's a bigger universe that we're trying to compete with right now.
Well, we probably should get to doing it, get back to doing it every three years. The other question I had was, we used to do exit interviews when people left. Do we still do that?
They fill out a paper form, yeah.
And what are we, what, what are those forms revealing?
Uh, there's a variety of things. A lot of it is, there's a lot of pay there, family situation. Some people don't care for the work of public, being in public service and dealing with council members, sometimes citizens as well. Those are some of the challenges that have been identified. I wouldn't say that there's one factor. There's, you know, a number of buckets.
Gabriella wishes to address this.
Oh, no, no. Yeah, I was, I, I agree. And I, I think to a certain extent, those exit interviews are only shared if necessary. So they're not just, we don't, we don't like review them as a personnel committee regularly unless there's a very particular reason why. But that, that's what I understand from Sarah, there's no one reason. But, and, and also like the, in terms of our turnover rate, like it's, it's high, but it's, to be honest, like there's a lot of turnover right now amongst all sectors and it's difficult to hire in the public and the private sector. So, you know, it's just a tough time right now. And so I think there's lots of different reasons besides the market poll, but also just, I think we just need to give pay raises in order to make sure we keep our staff and make sure that they're happy and supported. And I, I think it's well justified. And, and I, I do think, I personally think it'll help retention, but I guess that, that remains to be seen.
Dave?
Just a thought, you know, we, my business is in the same, the same scenario, you know, holding on to people. And we're, we're just committed, you know, we have to find lots of new, new people. Does the city consider going to, you know, these job fairs that the universities have?
We do go to a number of job fairs, yeah. I think Urban League has some we've been to, the university, technical colleges, I think maybe even some of the high schools.
All right, thank you. That's, that's a good, that's a good source.
Sarah has a really extensive advertising plan for our positions. Like we, we are everywhere possible for most of these positions. We, we look at the position descriptions and personnel and we talk about that. So yeah, they're everywhere.
All right, all right, moving along. Public safety, Dave, anything you want?
Anything I'd add, you know, that it's winding down now the number of parties and things, you know, there's one birthday party, the rest of the month approved. We had five new operator licenses this month, but things are, as, as usual, as you get towards the end of year, things are tailing down.
All right, thank you. No unfinished business, no new business, mayor's report, number of things. Tomorrow, there's the urban cutting for the Limerick Senior Apartments, just up the road here by the Lacy Road to Lacy Road around about, as I like to call it. Also, tomorrow is the mayoral awards and I believe last time I had not talked to the business, so I did not mention that, but the business that I'm recognizing is General Beverage. And so that's at five o'clock here, but the department that I recognize is the Streets Department. And since a lot of those people leave at three o'clock or so, we are going to a twelve-thirty down at their garage, do something down there. People are welcome to go down there as well to that if you'd like to. But I know they're kind of unsung heroes and the opportunity to kind of recognize them is pretty great. So that is also happening tomorrow. Also happening tomorrow at seven o'clock, if you heard, there was some shots that landed in houses in the Swan Creek neighborhood, came from the vicinity of the public hunting grounds, though we don't think it was a hunter that was doing the shooting. And so there's a public information, just kind of informational meeting for really anyone in the community. Swan Creek primarily is concerned, obviously, because of that. But all indications are that it was not hunters that were doing that. That being said, I think it just raised a question for myself and for Chief Morales as well about, you know, maybe we need to talk with the D N R. about preventing firearm hunting in that area. So it can still be and be do bow and crossbow, however, with Swan Creek, with the area over by the fire station in that neighborhood that's close by, Pramaga continue to expand. That stuff is all pretty close to the hunting grounds. And so we're talking with the D N R about, hey, like, maybe we just want this to be bow and crossbow. How do we change that? So we'll be doing that and we'll bring it to this area as well.
Yeah, we had, back when Swan Creek was approved and we started building houses there, there were a number of meetings with the D N R about that very issue. And they were absolutely adamant that it was public hunting ground and they were not changing anything. So I don't know if this incident's going to change their view. Perhaps it will, perhaps not. But just for awareness, there's, there's a lot of public hunting ground in Pittsburgh and, you know, when, especially this time of year, be careful when you're out there because you just never know what's going to happen.
Yeah, they seem, at least early indications are that they're amenable to make some changes, which is good. I mean, you also have the path going right through that area. So I just.
Right.
That's more and more popular, especially during COVID. So a lot of safety concerns with that. Yeah.
Yeah, is, I, so I don't know where that meeting's being advertised. I haven't seen a news flash. It's not on the website. It's not on the City of Pittsburgh.
It's happening fast.
It is on the website now because I saw it earlier today. But I also know that the Swan Creek neighborhood has been rather active in getting the information out to the people in the neighborhood.
I talked with Chief Paul Vermaeker about getting information out to his neighborhood because he lives over by the fire station over in that area. So that neighborhood also knows since they are close by.
Okay.
It's at the senior center. It's seven o'clock tomorrow. Sorry. Fish, oh, sorry, Fish Room, Fish Room. Sorry, got changed. And then just last thing is reminder that budget amendments are due on Friday. Please talk to Misty, submit them early if you can instead of dumping everything on her last second. I know that she appreciates that. And she can actually help you. So it's done a lot better too. So if you have any questions, please touch base with her. She is very helpful in that situation. But the budget is pretty great. So I don't know why you'd want to do any amendments anyway. Dave, why are you laughing? All right.
I like your.
All right, all the reports. I'll start with District Three tonight. Jay, anything?
Just a couple of things. I did want to bring up the meeting about the Swan Creek situation because neighbors are very upset about that. I, over the last six months, I've been getting more and more contacts from residents about issues with neighbors' dogs. And the issues have been that dogs are running free and that they're, and people are being, people and other dogs are being attacked. And our ordinances really only allow for us to write a fine if the dog leaves someone's property. So the state statute comes into play here because the state statute doesn't allow us to regulate what happens with someone's dog when it's on their property. So if someone has a dog on their property and it doesn't have a leash, we can't do anything about that. But if the dog comes off their property, we can. And we do have an ordinance that addresses that, but we can really only find somebody. So, you know, the, the only real solution for this is for residents to, if, if they have, if a neighbor's dog attacks them, they have to sue them. And, you know, for obvious reasons, people are a little reluctant to do that, but that's really the only, that's really the only recourse they have right now. So I'm starting to look into some things as to whether we can create a stronger regulation. But from what I read in state statute, I think our hands are pretty well tied as to what we can do. Like the city can't order a dog to be euthanized. We, we don't have the, that's not in our purview. That would have to come from a court. So I'll let you know if I come up with anything, but if you, I don't know if any of you have gotten other calls about this, but I've had quite a few over the last six months, particularly in Swan Creek and in Terre Vessa. And there was another, there was another neighbor that had contacted me from another neighborhood that I cannot recall right now. So if you have any thoughts on that, please let me know.
All right, thank you, Jim.
Nothing to report.
Randy?
Uh, nothing to report.
All right, Dave?
Uh, just not exactly district, but the Free Bikes for Kids had a collection on Saturday. I volunteered at and I would just encourage people, there'll be another one, I believe, in November. Anyone watching, if you have bikes in your garage, get them, you know, please bring them in, donate them. Ryan Huselmann, you know, he leads crews repairing them. I'm hoping to get, you know, fifty or so for, for Lord King James Way and, and the Three Fountains Apartments. But again, if, if you have bikes, please don't leave them laying in your garage. Donate them to Free Bikes for Kids.
Thank you, Joe.
So I got interesting outreach in from Dane County Extension. They have an interest in working, they're, they're, they're part of a tree canopy working group. It's an initiative by the Dane County Office of Energy and Climate Change. And they are working on increasing tree canopy. So they reached out specifically to me about looking at the Belmar Park as a tree planting site. So they plan on having a meeting. I think, Dave, are you going to be in the meeting?
When's it scheduled?
Uh, I think it's probably next week.
No, I believe ending.
Yeah. So yeah, we're, we're going to talk about it because I guess it meets the city's plan for tree canopy. I'm obviously nowhere near an expert on this because haven't taken on the initiative to kind of think about the archery canopy goals, but there's an interest there. Julie, I also included her in the communication as well. This Thursday from two to six P M. at Allied Park, we're going to do another voter registration or voter information drive. It's a partnership between the League of Women Voters, Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, the Urban League, Young Professionals, and Alder, Madison Alder, Jeanette Figaro, Col and myself. Basically, we go around the neighborhood, spread information about voting and, and direct folks to the My Vote website. We did one at the end of last month and we probably hit about half the neighborhood. So we plan on doing the same thing on Thursday.
Thank you, Julia.
Yes, so I want to announce that we have the new benches in the inclusive playground. And on Sat, Sunday, we planted nineteen new trees that they were a donation by Sierra Club. So there were a lot of, thank you Gabriella for coming, but your Girl Scout. And then, so there were a lot of volunteer and family with children planting the tree. And Jake Johnson was, he's part of the board of Sierra Club, was there and teaching the kids how to plant the trees. So it was a very nice event. So the other thing is, I want to have, I received and also for a neighbor that they live in the High Line Senior Apartment about the lack of light outside. And I think that bill was following, following with them. So they sent an email about what is the update. I think the city was working on that, someone from Public Work, but nothing happened. So if someone can follow up with that. That was, and then outside the, the district on Friday, we are celebrating, you know, it's the twelfth annual Hispanic Heritage Luncheon on that we always, the City of Pittsburgh participate. I don't know, I don't know if you're going to be there. I want to be there doing the proclamation. So it's a great event and the mononatares, we are representing Pittsburgh, especially, you know, representing our seventeen percent of Latino living in Pittsburgh. And I, there's a lot of people from community leaders, the mayor of Madison is going to be there and some other, the council from Mexico and Milwaukee. And so I think you are going to be there too, I don't know. But yes, so, so that one is a great. And I think Scott, you're going to be there like every year. Thank you. So that's it.
All right, thank you. Gabriella?
This was the thing I forgot from R C C. So I'll say it now. The recycling event is this Saturday. So this Saturday, October fifteenth, eight A M. to eleven A M. It's on the City Hall campus, very similar to Hasbit in past years, confidential paper recycling and shredding and electronics recycling. Please check the website and look at the brochure and be prepared when you come. Make sure that you have the payment ready to go and the proper payment and all of that good stuff. Let me know. Oh, yeah. And, and the information's very good on the website. So I, I don't think you need to ask me any questions. I think you'll get it all there. And hope, hope this, we'll get a turnout again. Hopefully we'll get a good turnout again. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Next council meeting is October twenty-fifth. Don't forget that the council meeting after that is November first. And instead of November eighth, which it would typically be, but with an election night and adding a new location, the Clerks Department asked if we could avoid that, that night. And so we did that. So just for the public to know, November first would be the meeting after that. And then committee of the whole is October twenty-sixth where we will discuss the zero amendments that people are going to submit for the budget. And I thought that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Jay, sent by Randy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? We are adjourned.